All right, we are moving along to new business, which is 9.0, which is the first reading of the 2021-2022 general fund operating budget. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters to lead this conversation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And tonight, very excited. Dr. Little, do you want to say anything in the opening?
Well, I was just going to say, you can tell by the agenda tonight. The agenda looks like it's a light agenda until we're getting ready to really jump into our first reading of the budget. And so we wanted to make sure that we had, we moved things to either the previous meeting or the next meeting to really leave room for this particular item. So, Mr. Salters.
Thank you, Dr. Little. So it's a very exciting time of the year for the finance team and others in the school district as we begin to work on and prepare a budget for next year. And a lot of changes happen over the next couple of months. And so, as you're aware, we have three readings of this budget. And so it's not really finalized until that third reading, which will happen in June. So you'll see some changes. We monitor the state legislature and all the things coming and going out of there. And we will continue to update the budget based on those changes over the next few months. Did want to start out, take a kind of a point of privilege and brag a little bit on our finance team. We were notified recently that once again, our Conference of Annual Financial Report was recognized for excellence in financial reporting. And this was done by the Association of School Business Officials International. And actually, this is the 27th consecutive year that the district has received this award from ASBO. So it's a very prestigious award. And it just speaks to the commitment of the board, all of the schools, and our finance team to being transparent and providing good accounting and working really hard to be diligent with taxpayer dollars and show that in our financial report. So we're very pleased to bring that information to you this evening. So want to thank our team for working hard on that. And so obviously, tonight, we're here to talk about the general fund budget. The general fund budget, it really serves as the primary operations of the school district. And so it's the day-to-day expenditures, you know, our payroll, paying the light bill, things like that are the expenditures that you'll find in the general fund operating budget that we'll discuss this evening. As we mentioned in our previous meeting, just want to kind of remind everyone about our system commitments and the strategic plan. And obviously, our budget should mirror that and support these commitments and the mission of the district. And so hopefully, you'll see that reflected as we go through the priorities and the funding targets within the budget. So very important that we keep this in the framework of everything that we talk about as we go forward. So talking about priorities for the 21-22 budget process, there were, you know, three on this first slide here, obviously, to reduce and/or maintain student-teacher ratios. And I think as we had our conversation when we were developing priorities at our last meeting, it's pretty evident the board was more interested in reducing than maintaining those ratios. And so that's what we've really looked hard at with the budget that we're bringing to you. And that'll be reflected here soon. A step increase for all staff is part of that priority. And then other employee retention and recruitment strategies that we will look at in this budget. As Mr. Stacy alluded to earlier, it's, you know, it's really difficult to get qualified staff. It's a very competitive market. And so we really need to develop unique strategies to remain competitive in this market. We have a great system, great schools, great facilities, great students, great staff. And so we really need to focus on ways to make sure that we keep the employees we have and then also draw new employees into the system. Some additional priorities that we're working on this year, ongoing support for our Lexington One Online Learning Academy. This was launched last year as part of our COVID response, and it will continue this year. The last enrollment that I believe I saw was well over 700 students in the academy, and that's middle and high schoolers. And so that's basically a school, you know, that's going to be attending the academy virtually. So that's a unique and exciting offering for the district. We're expanding the college center. Mr. Basket came last meeting and talked a good bit about this work. And it's very exciting, the growth and opportunities we're giving to students through these, this college center. Planning for the relocation of the Lexington Middle School facility, now named Lakeside Middle School, the new facility. And then we're also planning for the opening of Gilbert Early Childhood and Pelean Early Childhood Centers in those communities in the upcoming years. So just taking a quick look at the recruitment and retention measures that are in the budget, that some are new and some are recurring. As I mentioned, we're looking at providing a step increase for all employees. This budget includes that step increase. I'll tell you that we were in a meeting today and were informed that the Senate, actually just today, voted to include that step increase but also pay an additional $1,000 for every teacher that's listed in our professional certified staff listing. And so that's something that we're going to have to consider, you know, how that impacts our funding and our teachers and also other employees. It's a great idea. We're very thankful that the Senate has recognized the need for teachers. The state teacher salary schedule, you know, it stops and doesn't go all the way out to, our current teacher salary schedule goes out to 30 years. And so the state stops. And what happens is teachers who are at the upper end of the scale on the state's, during the state scale, don't get a raise, and they're not recognized. And so the Senate, they use this as a method to make sure that everyone, you know, was recognized through an increase. And so they didn't extend their schedule, but they did this. So the numbers that I'm showing you tonight, should that $1,000 hold, obviously will change. And so that's something that we'll have to consider going forward. If we were to take that same approach with all employees and give the step and then the additional $1,000, that would end up being about an additional $2.6 million or so in the overall budget. And that would not be a unique thing. You know, if you go back, and I can pull these numbers, but you go back and look at the last eight to 10 years, it's very common in the district that we would get a step and then like a 1% raise or a 2% raise. Recently, teachers got a 4% raise. So it's not unheard of to, you know, to go above that step increase. It is unique that the Senate's just saying $1,000, you know, flat amount. So that's something that we'll be watching very closely.
Mr. Salters, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because I actually had looked at that Senate projection or proposal today. And at least as of a few days ago, it was $72. And it went from $72 to $1,000?
It's $72 million, I think, is the allocation.
Okay. I think maybe the report I read had it misrepresented. And so it would take the whole teacher salary schedule and move at a $1,000?
Every cell would go up $1,000.
Okay.
That's right.
That's great.
Right. Yeah, it's very exciting for our teachers. That's right. This budget includes, again, looking at recruitment and retention, this budget includes taking the salary, all of our salary schedules out to 40 years. So we have some experienced employees out there who are either at the top of the existing schedules that stop at 30 years. Our bus driver's schedule actually stops at 24 years. And that's because it's tied to the state schedule. We are proposing and have calculated to extend those, all the schedules to 40 years. And so a bus driver, for example, who has been stuck at 24 years and been driving, let's say, in the district for 30 years, will be placed at step 30 on the schedule, you know, in July. So, you know, we hope that that will help keep our more experienced staff, give them an incentive to stay around. Additionally, we came up with a strategy. It's pretty unique. I haven't seen this implemented anywhere before. We kicked around a lot of different ideas and, you know, took some ideas from the board. And this strategy modifies our existing salary schedules, basically to provide a retention incentive every five years. And what it does is it provides an additional year, additional step earlier than you would get it. So when I hit year five, I actually get paid as your six salary. And then when I hit year six, I stay at year six, and then I go to year seven, eight, nine. When I hit year 10, I get year seven, I mean, excuse me, year 11 money, and I stay at year 11 for those two years. So hopefully, what we think this will do is it'll get those teachers or other staff members that are interested in, you know, maybe retiring and they're at like step, you know, let's say 23 or 24, hopefully, we can get them to hold out for a couple more years, stay around and get that, you know, get that additional pay kind of a year early, but it does that for two years. So it's a unique idea, you know, and, you know, we're not sure how it will ultimately play out in the system as far as recruitment. But we felt like it was a good strategy that we certainly wanted to look at in the budget. Dr. Little?
Just walk through that one more time, because this is really new. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear about what you're saying on that particular piece.
Yeah, so on the salary schedule, if I'm at year, I'm currently year four, as an example, and I go to year five, this, just this July, what would happen is I would actually get paid like I'm at year six for my fifth year. And then when I finish my fifth year, I'm already being paid like I have six years' experience. When I finish that fifth year, I stay at that six level payment. And then when I finish that sixth year, I go on to seven, eight, nine. I hit year 10, I get paid like I have 11 years' experience for two years. And so it gives me a little bit of advanced pay, if you will, recognition to try to keep me, to hold on for those later years. Similar to that, we have, in this budget, incorporated another strategy to pay teachers, new teachers to the system. Anyone who has less than three years of experience in the district would be paid as if they had three years' experience. So our salary schedules for teachers start at zero. And so for year zero, one, and two, you would actually be paid as if you were on step two. So I graduate college and I come to the system, I'm actually getting year two pay instead of year zero pay. And I get that for a three-year period of time, and then I'll obviously move on to year three after, or step three after that. And it marries up with our performance evaluation system. At year three, the teacher becomes a continuing contract teacher. And so we feel like that's a good incentive. Some districts are paying bonuses, signing bonuses, if you will, those kinds of things. We talked a lot about that, but we felt like this strategy would be, you know, better on the long term. You know, sometimes signing bonuses create complications. You know, you pay somebody a bonus and they work here a year, and then they leave, and then you've got all the, you know, you've dealt with the bonus and that kind of thing. So we feel like it's key to put that money in teachers' hands early and allow them to grow. Some other districts are doing a similar strategy, but they're doing it for longer periods of time, maybe the first five years of the teacher's employment. We're just concerned about going five years without any kind of incremental raise. So we felt like that three-year timeframe worked really well, and it also obviously lines up with our evaluation system. So that's a strategy we're looking at with that.
What does that translate to in real dollars? So if you looked at it cumulatively over zero to one, one to two, what does that roughly come to? $2,500, $3,000?
You can look at the salary schedule.
Kyle, I was just looking that up. Right now, it's $3,5991 for a zero. So that's about $900 more for the first year, or the zero year.
Yeah, and so you'll see the bachelor's on the new schedule is $36844. And so you'll get that for the first three years, zero, one, and two. And now, you know, assuming if you came to the district, understand, if you came to the district, you know, from another district and you have taught a year, you know, you're getting experience credit for that. So you would, you know, you would stay in that window, obviously, a little bit less time.
So cumulative would be roughly plus $2,500, somewhere along in there?
I'm doing it. Hold on just a second.
I'm sorry, I don't have the old schedule in front of me. So I'll let Kathy give us that answer in just a minute.
$1,279. Which, like you were saying, a lot of districts are offering that $1,000 signing bonus. So that's more than $1,000 over that time period, which helps with recruitment and retention.
Right.
Is that with a three-year commitment? So if they leave us before, they have to pay it back or not?
No. Not currently. It's not set up that way.
But they have that, the three-year retention benefit. And then year five, they're at step six.
They get another benefit.
So, I mean, they get a little bit...
We felt like really dropping these retention ideas through the system really, because, you know, you get to year 20, 22, whatever, and you're just kind of sitting out there, what are they, you know, oh, those are very valuable employees, and we need to, you know, we need to recognize that as well and try to retain them. So we felt like that strategy every five years was another option to do that.
Well, and isn't retirement based on the...
Highest 12 quarters.
Highest 12 quarters. And so if you're getting nearer to retirement and you're at a five-year step opportunity, to me, you wouldn't want to stay because that's going to be a higher, I mean, that's going to pull your average up for your retirement.
That was our thinking. The next recruitment-retention strategy, obviously, our bus drivers are critical employees in our system. And so their pay is very competitive. They go through an extensive training process and certification process. You don't just walk in off the street and decide you want to drive a bus. And so they're very valuable employees. And we're recognizing an additional dollar an hour for our bus drivers in the, in this strategy. Also, we looked at some other key elements of our system, nurses, social workers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, career specialists, board-certified behavior analysts. And what we're doing with this is recognizing their educational degrees, similar to the way we would a teacher, and placing them on the schedule that way. So, you know, teachers have, you know, get credit for a bachelor's, a master's, you know, master's, whatever. And so this would do the same for this group of highly-trained staff as well.
Can I ask a question about the bus drivers?
Yes, please.
About how many hours? Is that a full-time?
Typically, it is. And it varies, you know, from, I guess, from route to route, if you will. But they are typically full-time employees.
So like 40 hours a week?
Yes.
So it'd be like a four, okay.
Mr. Salters, if you don't mind.
Please.
Some drivers are six hours a day and some are eight. Both of those carry the benefits, so they don't all, they don't all work 40 hours. Maybe six, six hours a day. But they're all, just about all of them are considered full-time.
Okay, then additionally, you know, another piece of feedback that you guys had shared as we were talking is substitute pay. And so we've incorporated in our strategy here to raise substitute pay for a number of our subcategories. I'll actually, next month, I'll include a chart, next reading, I'll include a chart of that. But I've included that in the back of your, the insert that I gave you tonight. The last page of that salary schedule information has the substitute pay rates that you see, that we're proposing, that would change on there. So pretty good bumps in pay. And again, we're trying to really be competitive. Our subs are critical to what we do. And it's, you know, it's harder and harder to find subs as other jobs are available for them. And so we're trying to be competitive with their pay.
And this, never mind, I see it, never mind.
Okay. Okay, some additional recruitment-retention strategies that are ongoing. I appreciate our instructional services team kind of developing this list for me. I said, you know, we really ought to look at what we're doing already and make sure we highlight those things. And so, you know, the budget continues to fund the National Board stipend of $3,000, regardless of whether a teacher received a state-funded $7,500 or $5,000. You know, those are eventually being phased out. But we're paying 275 National Board supplements in Lexington One. So that is, that is a continued effort that we'll have in the budget. I think Ms. Garrett highlighted that in her comments last time. We do provide a number of opportunities for reduced-cost graduate-level courses to our teachers, including those professional texts that go along with those courses. A number of just different professional development opportunities for really all of our staff in their areas of expertise. So, and those are, you know, you'll see those throughout the system. And then we provide opportunities for teachers to earn additional pay as well, curriculum writing, camps, after-school programs. Obviously, we talked a lot at the last meeting about our summer programs and initiatives that are going on this summer. So those are in there for our teachers. And then we have a number of stipends and supplements for various activities that our teachers and other leaders in the schools do as part of their extra duties throughout the course of a day to serve our children. So department heads, lead teachers, different clubs, yearbook sponsorships, obviously, our coaching supplements, athletics. So different, a number of different strategies that are existing in our, you know, budget that are going to continue to be recommended as part of this budget. Okay, so just taking a quick look briefly at our enrollment, you know, for probably 20 years or more, we averaged about 500, just over 500 students a year in growth. You know, that dates back to the really mid-'90s. We kind of stopped going back because it just, it was 500, 500, 500. And so this current year is a real anomaly, obviously, and for a lot of reasons. One of those reasons is our enrollment. And so you see that down here at the bottom, the 2020-2021 projected enrollment was 2742. And we actually are down 161 students. And this is actually the 90-day average daily membership as compared to the 135-day of 1920. These are all 135. At the time we developed this chart, the 135-day had not been completed and submitted to the State Department. We actually have just done that, so second reading will include that 135-day number. But you can see, we had a very unique year and had a number of students leave us. We're projecting for this upcoming budget year that will hit back into our trend of the 515. And so, you know, we'll see how that goes, but this budget is built based on that growth. We anticipate, you know, some students who have found other opportunities for their education to come back to Lexington One. And then we also anticipate a number of students moving into the system as they normally do. Interestingly enough, the housing market right now is just in a very unique state. And if you haven't been following it, you heard a great presentation at the Chamber the other day, and it's probably on their website still. We are in one of the all-time lows of inventory for sale in Lexington County. They're actually more, I think it's like a four-to-one ratio Realtor to house for sale in Lexington County. So that's going to be interesting to see how that works. Typical house, we were told the other day, you know, in the $200,000-$300,000 range, we'll see 20 to 30 offers within two days on it. And that's, you know, just unheard of. And you're seeing these homes being sold for as much as 110% of their asking price. So it makes it very interesting to try to figure out how many students can actually move into the district when you have that much competition for the houses that are here. So it's going to be interesting to watch this enrollment as we go.
And then, didn't the county just do a 180-day freeze on approving any developments bigger than 10 houses? So...
Right. So they, and you know, there's pros and cons to that as well. So obviously, growth in the district, or in Lexington County, has been a longstanding topic in trying to manage that growth. You know, there are people trying to move into the district, and the Realtors obviously need more inventory and want more inventory. But you're right, they just took action to basically freeze that development for anything that's not platted at this point. So that will, it'll have an impact on us, but probably not an immediate impact, because there are a number of homes that are already platted and permitted that are going up in our system now.
On my neighborhood HOA page last week, one of my neighbors just posted, "I have a friend with three small children, and they're looking for a house in the Riverbluff area about this size." If you know anybody that wants to, I mean, it's like they're soliciting houses for sale. And probably, I've mentioned this, but probably close to a dozen houses in my neighborhood have sold since Christmas. And I think every single one of the families that's moved in has a five-year-old. I'm pretty sure they all have five-year-olds. So I think that we, I think that might be a modest estimate.
Yeah. Well, we're, we'll see how it plays out. It's, it'll be interesting to watch as the year unfolds, for sure. One of the things we talked a lot about in our last meeting was targeted staffing ratios. And so I wanted to highlight for you the target ratios at each of our grade levels. Again, understand, these are targets. And so you'll walk around the school, and you may see a class that has fewer than this in it, or you may see a class that has a couple of students more than this in it. But these are the targeted goals. Just, you know, starting out in elementary, our five-year-olds in 18, 19, we were at 22. We were able to hold that. Last year, we went to 23. Now, this proposed budget has us at 21 to one. And you'll see those numbers reflected in our, obviously, all the elementary in our upcoming slides. First grade, again, was followed the same trend, and we're sitting at 21 to one. Second grade, the same as well, 21 to one. Third grade, we were at 25. We were able to drop that to 23 in 2020, 2021. If I'm not mistaken, this was around the time that our legislature did some things with our reading requirements. And so third grade became a real focus. And so we've held that 23 to one. And then fourth and fifth grade was at 26 to one last year, and we've dropped that to 23 to one as well. On our middle and high schools, these numbers are a little different to look at. It's very simple at the elementary level, because one teacher teaches the subjects, and you have that many students, and you'll pretty much find that many students in a classroom. Middle and high school, obviously, students move around the building, and you have exploratory teachers and other instructional coaches and things like that that play into the ratio. And so for middle school, we're proposing a 23 to one number. And at the high school level, it's 18 to one. And there's a note, you can see that that ratio actually drops. You actually get more support as those numbers get smaller, the student numbers get smaller. So your smaller high schools, because we have to have that, you know, the base level of programs, end up having a little bit more support. But you're going to walk into classrooms at the high school level, and you'll see more than 18 students in a classroom. So understand that there are, there are other staff that factor into that, into that ratio number. So that, it's just how it's calculated to staff the school. Ms. Green, you had a question? Ms. Green, you had a question?
Yeah, I have a question, and, and you might be able to answer this, and perhaps Dr. Tally might be able to answer this. So there's actually a House Bill 3465, it passed the House and it's in the Senate Education Committee now, that, and it was amended and the amendment was approved, that requires a quarter of teacher time to be unencumbered planning time. Is that built into these num, to the staffing number? Because that, that changes our staffing levels from what I understand, right?
It does.
Is that part of the conversation? Are you going to wait to see what the Senate does with it? I'm, I'm just curious because I mean, I don't think that that is a whole harmless situation. I think it's something that the districts have to handle. And so I could see that being significant in our staffing.
Mr. Salters mentioned earlier in his beginning of his report, a meeting he had, he and his staff attended, I think you said, today. Same with your question. This budget is a fluid budget because we're very disappointed that we go to meetings and we are not given clear direction yet. So we just, we are in a wait-and-see period, to be honest. And if I could say, some of their, some of their ideas are just really astonishing to me. It's, it's clear they're not educators, if I could just say that. I'll try to be a little more apolitical. Thank you.
And I'll just move on to keep her from getting too far off.
When, when we look at these, at the, the staffing ratios, can you kind of speak to the interplay of LULA? I, I guess I'm trying to understand, is the driver for this lower staffing, is it LULA? Is it increased staff at the school, or is it both? I'm assuming it's both.
If you can hold on for two more clicks, I think I have a better picture that'll show you that, if, if that's okay. So we'll, we'll look at our expenditure summary, and Dr. Guyton, this is really what I'm looking at here. So this gives you a picture of, of where the, the staff are, are going. And so at the elementary level, it, it's not LULA. I mean, we are adding 25 and a half FTE to accommodate these ratios. At, at the middle school level, there's a combination of things going on here. It, it's some, some of the reduction at the middle school level is related to LULA and students participating in LULA because you see those 37 teachers had to come from somewhere and they came from middle and high school numbers, okay? However, we also have a large shift in our enrollment. It's some 500 or so students from the middle school to the high school. So it, it's, it's interesting. We, we have a smaller cohort of elementary students coming in and a larger cohort matriculating up to the high school. So you'll have those bubbles occur in the system from time to time, and you obviously have to have the, the teaching shifts to do that. So there is some shift to LULA, and you see that that's overall, that's 37 FTE to, to accommodate those roughly, you know, 700 or so students. And then again, we're adding approximately 12 FTE at the high school level. And then we have 5.1 special needs positions, and we're carrying right now three and a half pool positions in the budget. Historically, those pool positions have been in the budget to address special need concerns as they arise throughout the course of the school year. A new student comes in that needs a, you know, a, a certain program offering or something like that, and we, we end up adding those throughout the course of the year. So you can, I hope that gives you a better picture of where the shift occurs and, and how, how it's happening. But, but again, those 25 and a half elementary teachers are really put, being put in there to lower those ratios. So it's, it's very targeted.
Sure, sure. How does the, the number of FTE for LULA compare to, say, traditional face-to-face school? From an educational perspective, obviously, you can take the support side out, outside of IT. But what would that look like at a school level?
I think rough math, it's, it's around, and I was just basing all the 700 or so. So it's around 18 or so students to teach, to the, to a teacher. And so obviously, you're going to have, it's more, this year, it's going to be, I guess, more of a, a, a real schedule. So you're not going to be dealing with just one teacher for your LULA offering. You're going to, you're going to have different courses and, and I think move back and forth to, to different instructors. So, but it's, it's very similar to what you would experience in a middle school or a high school. Those teachers are not carrying a 40 or 50-student load like, you know, you, you might think.
So essentially, LULA is being staffed at what we would normally staff an elementary school at, for example. I mean, that's.
That's pretty close, yeah.
That's good. We, we staffed LULA 28 to 1.
So the FTE is, we took. So there's more than 700 students.
There's 740, 747.
747? Okay. I mean, obviously, you can, you can accommodate more students from, in an online platform.
Well, we staffed it because we weren't sure, and we still aren't sure. And we make adjustments even as the summer moves on when we see enrollments. Like, I've already had principals call me. So how we did that, how we staffed them, is we took the projected enrollment, and then the adjustments to the projected enrollment were LULA. And so we had 757, 747 students. 472 high school and 275 middle school students say they were going to go to online learning. We knew where those students were supposed to go to their home school, so we adjusted the projected enrollment by taking that number away from the school enrollment and assigning that to LULA. And then we did the same thing with the College Center. Because the College Center, we have about 100 students next year that are going to go to the College Center. They were coming from different high schools, and we had just made an adjustment to that number there.
So 747 enrolled, that's going to leave us at 20, that's, that's going to be 20 to 1?
Well, the, so I, so I did 472 divided by 28, and I get 17. That's at high school. And 275 divided by 28 is around 10. So 10 and 17 is 27 FTE. And then we also had to do related arts, that's just core.
Okay.
And so we have five, I gave them five FTE at both high school and middle school for related arts, which gives them 10 more, so that's how they got to 37.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's, that's the multiplier you're missing is the related arts.
Yeah, the related arts, got it, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So overall, that's 73.27 FTE. And, and as Mr. Stacy mentioned earlier this evening, we, you know, we appreciate the board's willingness to go ahead and start moving to try to identify these positions because it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's a very competitive job market right now. And so it helps to be able to go ahead and lock teachers into a pool position and then place them at some point in the, in the future once things get finalized. Moving on to our, our general fund, support and administrative changes. We, we have, on this slide, we have, you know, a total of nine net new positions. We have three instructional support staff. These are your 5K assistants. So in a, in a kindergarten classroom, you have a certified teacher and then a, an assistant, and this is the assistants that go along with that. Then we have non-instructional support. We have, we have formulas for all of our staffing at our, our offices and, and, you know, guidance and that, those types of things. And so this is, at Beachwood Middle School, they've reached the enrollment threshold to have another assistant, support staff assistant in the office area. And so that's what that, and actually, they qualified last year. And so we, we make them wait a year to make sure the enrollment sticks. Obviously, it usually does in our system, and so we've, we've added that per the formula. Three special needs, instructional assistance for related programs at, at schools. Then we have our LULA administrator. Obviously, when you have 747 students, you need, you need some administrative support related to that. And so we're proposing to add that. And then the central services administrative staff position is our Chief Technology Innovation Officer. Dr. Little, I think, has, has spoken about some. And then I'm showing you our, our bus driver dollar-per-hour increase. And then our increase in substitute pay is reflected the cost of that. Then we have some supplements, temporary salaries and, and some areas that are decreasing the budget. We actually had a couple of supplements that, for like a webmaster, we, our web people, every school has a web person who's responsible for their website. They're doing a lot of transition and, and having to do some more work there. So those supplements went up slightly. We actually added this year a program that came straight from our, our Teacher Advisory Council. One of the things that they felt really strongly about was a, a peer ambassador program for, for our teachers. And so this creates a small supplement at each school for that peer ambassador program. And so overall, it nets out to a, to a small decrease in the budget. But again, with these positions as well, as we mentioned, the competitiveness of the job market, ideally, we, we would be able to go ahead and, you know, post these positions and, and, you know, the next few days, and go ahead and make commitments, obviously pending budget approval, final budget approval, to, to be able to start these positions in July 1, or, or some of these would be actually August contract starts because they line up with school days. But we, we really, you know, feel like we, we could see some domino effects by the hiring of some of these positions where you may have a, an existing administrator move into one of these roles, and then that would open up another administrative role. And, and that could have someone move into it, which could open up another role. I mean, it could just be a domino. And so we really feel like, you know, we, we, we need to go ahead and, and deal with these like we've done with our, our teaching staff so that we can, you know, get folks kind of settled. Obviously, all of that would be pending budget approval after the third reading, and no one would start before July 1. But that's something that we, you know, I know our HR team would really like to get moving on to try to, try to finalize these things and, and really get the, the, the best candidate pool opportunities that we can get as we post these jobs.
Mr. Salters, these, these dollar figures are not base salary, they're salary and fringe?
That is correct. Every, every salary that's in there includes all the fringe benefits. And, you know, just as an aside, you know, we, we have a, the employee pays 9% retirement, and we pay 21% retirement, which is unheard of, but that's the state mandate. So, you know, most organizations, you know, you're, you're lucky if they'll match your 401K at 2% or 3%, and we're paying, we're required to pay 21%. So that is included in that, in those numbers. It's a good point.
So this is total net changes from last year's budget to what's being proposed for this year's budget. And I know we have several chief-level retirees. Is the salary change from them to the new people accounted into this?
Yeah, the salary change for the, the new positions that are coming in are accounted for in the, in the overall base budget. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're not listed separately on a line item here. They would be, you'll, you'll see them in our expenditure summary slide. But I mean, they're not earmarked out, but it's in the base budget. Yes, ma'am. Other questions or, I don't know, Dr. Little, you need to, if there's anything you'd like to?
I, I did want to add about the Chief Technology and Information Officer, just for the board. For, from approximately 2010 to, sorry, from approximately 2000 to 2010, technology was a standalone division in Lexington one. I think it also had maybe accountability with it, but by and large, it was based for technology. Because that, at that point in the district's cycle, life cycle, that there was a major push for the district to expand technology and for the opportunities that technology provided. And of course, Mr. Salters had a, had a front page or a front row seat for that and all that work. That position, as the district approached the, the end of the 2000s, that district, that district position was then consolidated with the administration position that actually created the operations division somewhere around 2010, 2011. I think I'm, I'm pretty much in the ballpark there. And that stayed as it was until 2018. And at 2018, if you'll recall, we merged finance with operations, and then that became operations. And we took technology and we folded it under instruction. And as we've reflected over the last few months about that move, and as we have a trans, let me say it again, as we have a transition with Dr. Tally also retiring, we feel like, just like in the early 2000s, what we've done, we've come upon another pivotal point in the life cycle of our district. And where we see technology, and certainly the, the pandemic has highlighted its role in our mission to serve students. We've added, and, and really, this is an understatement when I say we've added a number of devices. I think we are, we're probably somewhere in the 30-some thousand range when it comes to teacher and student devices that we have in the district or, or staff and student devices that we have in the district. And the role of technology that we see in our district is only going to expand. It's only going to become more pervasive as we move forward. And we really want to make sure, and we, we understand that that technology piece with the Chief Technology and Innovation Officer, that there will be major innovations and initiatives associated with that that will have district-wide implications. Certainly, there will be significant budgeting implications as we talk about long-term sustainability plans when it comes to technology, and also improving the capacity of our connectivity and other things associated with that. Long-range planning is going to be absolutely essential. It's not going to be just about what are we doing over the next year, or how can we get through the pandemic, but what does technology look like over the next five years and beyond. Multiple departments, applications, instructional technology, as well as network services are all a part of that reporting mechanism. And the person would really serve as a bridge among, a hub, if you will, among operations, technology, services, and instruction, and, and really exist in a lot of worlds. Because we want, we want that person to be able to talk about the input as well as the output. And ultimately, the output is how are we best serving our, our families? How are we best serving our community and, and what that looks like? So from, from this position, we really feel like it's a critical moment to move forward. We did talk about some of the, the, the real budget impact on it will not be nearly as significant just because of some of the differences in, in, in some of our transition. But, but we think this is a critical moment in, in where we are as a school district and, and the work that's going to have to be led moving forward. And because of that significance, that's why we brought that position for you today. So it's not a new position for us. It's actually a, a reimagined position. We're not reimagined, it's, we're reopening the position that we once had back in the early 2000s. We're going to call it the Chief Technology and Innovation Officer. But essentially, what it does is it captures our technology department and will lead us forward.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Little. Just taking a look at some additional, you know, salary information. You know, this, all great plans are, are go to waste when you go to a meeting, I guess, and, and you hear that there's been additional, you know, of course, it's good news that there's an additional $1,000 thrown out there. But short of that, this was a step increase for all eligible employees. This was that cost. And that, this step increase includes the new, newly modified recommended retention schedules. So the five, 10, 15, you know, year schedules, the extensions out to 40 years, the teacher schedule with the zero to two, and so forth. And so it, it includes all of that. It does include state mandated employer, retirement and health insurance increases. We do have a funding shortage for reading coaches, nurses, and career specialists. The state provided some funding for these different categories and is reducing that, that funding. So these, yes, ma'am.
Well, I was going to ask, so what, how much did you say? If the $1,000 becomes reality, the, our top line increases because the, the basis of which that top line is calculated has increased, right?
Yes.
Okay, so do we know what that cost would be to the district? Because they don't provide that in addition to the step increase, they just provide the step.
Well, so, so the $1,000, if this, if this certified staff, as Mr. Stacy mentioned earlier, you guys approved 1960 something, something, I'm just going to say 2,000 people. The bulk of those would be, would quote-unquote qualify. Basically, anybody who gets a teacher supply check under their. check under their listing would qualify for this. And so those individuals would get the $1,000. And it's our understanding right now that the $1,000 and the associated fringe would come with it as revenue to the district. So those individuals would not, I mean, we would, you know, revenue would come in, it would go up, expenditures would go up accordingly. The other consideration we have to make is the other, you know, 2,000 or so employees that we have in the system, what would you do with them? Would you also do a $1,000 increase for them? And if you did, again, roughly, you know, we haven't plugged anything in because we literally just heard this today, and we were just did a rough takeoff estimate of, you know, some $2.6 million or so for the other employees that are not on that list. Because there are some employees who are, you know, sort of are on the certified salary schedule that do not qualify, and we would obviously have to pick them up as well. So, you know, roughly, you know, an additional $2.6 million.
Okay. Because that's, it's not a, it's not a $1,000 bonus. It's a $1,000 increase to where everybody...
It is an annual, that's right.
And so anything that we do step increase is based on that new increased base?
That's right.
So, okay.
That's right. It is an annual salary adjustment, not a one-time bonus. It's a very important distinction.
And there's nothing bad about the state wanting to give our teachers more money.
No, absolutely not.
Outstanding.
That's great.
But it does come with additional costs to the district when they do that.
That's right. That's right. So continuing on, we've talked a lot about our salaries, new positions. I do want to highlight for you some increases in our programs and services. I just, I took a little bit different approach this year. We kind of broke it out by division. And you can see, there are some small increases in our communications division. This is basically some survey tools that they are using to better communicate with our community. And then we have a number of things that make up the increase in IT. We have some software licenses. We're on a cost per copy implementation to reduce our printer footprint, and obviously bringing on additional sites. And we have to bring on more copiers than that associated cost. Moving down through operations, utilities, we have some new buildings. We, you know, we do anticipate a small rate increase, so we budget for that. We started this year, actually, we've just started a grounds maintenance contract at all of our school facilities. We are one of the few districts around that, of our size, that hasn't done this. And we started this initiative back when COVID hit. We said we really need to get our custodial staff in the buildings. And we have, at times, multiple custodians out riding lawnmowers all day to cut grass at our schools. And that just wasn't an efficient use of our staff. We needed to be able to provide some service for that. So this grounds maintenance contract is rolled in with an existing retention pond maintenance contract. Our county has a very stringent, and rightfully so, stormwater management program. And so we have to maintain all of our retention ponds and cut them on a regular cycle. And so that's all folded together. So we're pleased with that. Safety emergency services, small increase there. It's an additional SRO, the equipment associated with an additional SRO. And then there's a small cost of living increase. We're not sure what the county and town are going to do with their salaries yet, but we maintain a little cost of living increase in there just to be protected from that, for our portion of what we pay with them. And then the maintenance division, we have some additional supplies and so forth related to our new, some of our new schools. Student services, we have some, in our health category, we have SNAP, which is our license, our software that we manage our clinical interactions with students. We pay for some drug testing kits and those kinds of things. We anticipate, I believe I'm right, Mr. Colwell, we anticipate that drug testing, student drug testing program picking back up this year. It was suspended for a year, and I think, I think we're doing that again. And that's part of what's in this, in this number.
Currently, our thinking is maybe we would open it back up second semester of the coming school year, not in the fall, though.
And then similarly, at our transportation department, we have some additional repairs and supplies for equipment that they maintain there. And then our school allocations, that's , we allocate a per pupil amount to each school, and then they distribute that out into their various accounts that they use. And so we have an increased enrollment, so that naturally would go up. So total increases on our accounts payable side, about $1.5 million. Highlight a few decreases to sort of offset that. This is one we're really excited about and pleased with. We've had a lot of conversations with our insurance carrier, Schizbit. And through those conversations, we negotiated basically upwards of $1 million of decrease in our budget impact this year. They had a loyalty program distribution. So for customers who had been in the system for a long time and paid into the system, they're doing a one-time payment this next year to all of those customers for essentially, I guess you would say, excess premiums that have been in their pool. And so we're getting the benefit of that. But we also got the benefit of a rate reduction because of our good workers comp scores and our good property and casualty scores as well, low-risk scores. And so that's upwards of $1 million almost of reduction with our premiums. So we're pleased with that.
And that's recurring, or it's just this budget year?
So about $350,000 of that is non-recurring, is one time. But the rest of it is recurring. Yes, sir. Dr. Powes, I should say that pending any, you know, major claim or anything like that that would change the risk structure, that's evaluated each year.
Your letter of coverage is not changing, so the coverage remains whole.
That is correct. We have the same coverages and no changes there, no deductible reductions or anything like that. That's a great, great point. And then you see some other small decreases associated with instructional services department. One I would point out, student services department, we, you see the note there, we have a partnership with Lexington County Mental Health, and we are actually going to pay those expenditures. We pay $20,000 per mental health counselor, and we're going to pay those out of our ESER funds, which is obviously ESER. As we mentioned previously, mental health is a big portion of that, so we're going to transfer that expenditure over there. We also have a reduction in leadership development. Over the years of that program, we've developed our own, you know, cohort of leadership, and are able to do that work in curriculum delivery ourselves now. And so we have that knowledge base in-house, and so we're able to lower that, that number over time, which was a strategy from the, from the beginning inception of that, that program. So you can see salaries and related costs. What you're looking at is our amended budget as of last Tuesday night, when you guys did the amendment for the step increase for employees. That put the overall budget at, excuse me, expenditures, I'm sorry, the overall expenditures at $262,107,987. Our proposed expenditures are $263,945. Only a slight increase. And you might say, well, why is that only a slight increase? We're giving employees a step. We're, you know, we're doing these other things. How are you only doing that by increasing the budget $900,000? Well, and that's a great question because I asked the same thing, and we had some much conversation about that. If you'll remember, we did a one-time $1,000 bonus. That was a one-time payment. That was an expenditure of over $6.5 million. All right? So that's a big chunk of money that we aren't going to expend this year. So that itself offsets a good portion of the difference that we're talking about. Additionally, we are, this year, this past year, the first year when I took over, we tried to develop some strategies to kind of tweak our surplus at the end of the year. So if you recall, we used a 98% payroll budgeting strategy this past, or this current budget year. It looks like, based on the things that we're seeing now in our projections through the end of this year, that we actually, this year, will hit about 95%. So I'm very pleased that we're not at, I'm not telling you we're hitting 99%. I mean, I think HR would say I wish we hit 100%. I don't know that that's really ever a reality, obviously. But this budget reduces that percentage by one point. So we're factoring 97% utilization of our payroll budget. You go back and you look at the seven-year average, and we've averaged 96.43 over that seven year. There were a couple of years early on of the last seven years that we were at 98%. And so, you know, that, taking that percentage off is obviously about $2.6 million. So, you know, we're proposing to budget at 97%. And, you know, we feel comfortable with that. Obviously, it may end up being a little, you know, a little tight. But, you know, we feel like that's a reasonable thing to do. One of the frustrations that I think, it's hard to say as a finance person that it's a frustration, because at the end of the year, you want a surplus. But you recall this past year, you know, we had a $12 million surplus. And that paid for that one-time bonus, and it paid for the step, and it caused us not to have to really go into the savings account, if you will. And so we anticipate all things kind of being equal to get to the end of this year, you know, in our projections. We anticipate having a surplus again this year. It won't be, we don't think it's going to be a $12 million surplus again, because we, you know, we've taken some things to be more aggressive, obviously. But we feel like that, that will help us as we go forward, and we're comfortable with that 97% number there. But that's, that's really the reason why you don't see a big gap in the expenditures for the two years. Dr. Powes?
And if for whatever reason, we have a run on people wanting jobs and ends up in 98, we would just tap into our fund balance to cover the difference?
Yes, sir.
And then reconcile it in the next budget year?
Yes, sir. And if we, if we didn't have, you know, the associated surplus left from, you know, if we didn't bring a surplus into this year that was adequate enough to cover, essentially, that goes into fund balance. So we would, you know, we would tap the fund balance to do that, and then reconcile it the next year. And so additionally, you see that programs and services, we really worked hard to get that number as tight as it is. So really, only a small increase there, $338,000. And so overall, total budget expenditures, roughly $1.2 million this upcoming year. So not quite hitting the $300 million threshold just yet, at least in our proposed first reading. I guess when we throw those additional salary adjustments for teachers in there, we might, we might make that number. Just wanted to put this number out there for you. This pie chart, I think it's very important that we, we focus on what, you know, what our mission is. Our mission is educating students, our staff, our teachers in the classrooms, our administrators in the buildings, our food service, custodians, cafeteria workers, you know, every, everybody, bus drivers, everybody is, you know, critical to that mission. And they all, you know, fall into this big blue area of the pie chart. And that's why, you know, it's so critical that we have that 88% there supporting our staff in the, in the schools. So obviously, you have those expenditures. Take a quick look at how we think revenue might look coming in. This chart is now wrong today, as well, as of today. I promise you, we had everything going, and then we went to a meeting. So, but, but it's, I think Dr. Tally used the word fluid earlier. I think that's a very, very good word. It is a very fluid environment that we're working in. So, and actually, the base student cost, you know, this is, the blue is what Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office says is a fully funded base student cost. And you can debate that conversation a lot of different ways, and they do down at the State House. Fully funded base student cost, 3140. Originally, the House version had the base student cost at 2,500. And so we learned today that the Senate version has the base student cost at 2,516. And so they bumped it up just a little bit to, you know, to help, help with that. So what does that mean for us? Again, we're looking at our, kind of our amended revenue as of last Tuesday, revenue from local sources. We're projecting about a $5.5 million increase in local sources. And we've, you know, we've seen our, you know, local property tax growth, you know, has really held true. And so we're seeing that increase there. State sources, you know, salary and fringe distributions will come in there. And then our, you know, operational balance, basically what we're proposing in this, this budget is to use, we're showing the use of $5.5 million of that, you know, our operational balance to balance the budget. Again, we anticipate some surplus coming out of this current budget. And we won't know that until, you know, we reconcile out and close out the year. But we feel like that surplus will more than likely cover that gap of operational balance there going forward. So overall, again, projected revenue increase, about $1.2 million as well.
What will the, if we use that operational balance of $6 million, what will that leave our fund balance as a percentage of our total balance?
As a percentage, I'll have to get you an exact number, but it's over, it's around 20%? 18, okay. I'll get you that exact number, Dr. Powes.
And that for the bondholders and such is in line with what they expect to maintain our?
Yes. Yes. You have a board policy. It's, it's an old board policy that says that you need to maintain 7%. You'll see GFOA and, you know, a lot of the government standards recommend at least 16%. Our bond, you know, holders and credit rating agencies really like our fund balance position. They would be, you know, be disappointed, I guess is a good word, if, if that changed significantly. And certainly, if it changed drastically quickly over the course of a year or two. You want that to be, you know, slowly increasing as your budget increases. I mean, we have a $1.2 million projected increase here for this reading. And, you know, you would like to see that hold or tick up just a little bit relative to that. And obviously, and certainly in the market we're in when we're selling bonds and, and the debt structure that we have, it results in very nice refundings and things that we have been able to make use of over our bond sales over the last few years. Just taking a look again, we talked about this chart at the last meeting, but I did just want to remind you that we still don't have the exact calculation for the millage. There's a couple of numbers that we're still waiting on to come in so we can make those calculations. But we're anticipating about 11 mil increase limitation, so that you could levy up to 11 mils. And actually, you could levy, using the Act 388, look back, you could levy an additional 37.85 mils on top of that. And so I'm just putting that out there as information for you, so that you know that that capability is there. The next slide shows you the millage rate and the value of a mil. So if you, you know, went up one mil, you know, it would, it would generate $312,881. And so, and just a reminder that this is all, all on non-owner-occupied property. So we, you know, as homeowners in South Carolina, we do not pay tax for school operations. And so it falls on the non-owner-occupied, so your businesses and your rental properties, cars, and, you know, manufacturing and so forth. And, and in this budget, we are not proposing any millage increase. I, I think it's an important statement to, to, to talk about, certainly within your purview to do that. But currently, in, in first reading, administration is not recommending any, any increase to offset any revenue. So with that, you know, I, I tell you that that's our, our first reading, as I've already mentioned to you, and there's going to be a number of changes for second reading. And we anticipate those, and we'll, we'll monitor and continue to, to look at what the, the Senate and the House are, are working on. Hopefully, you know, conference committee will get together, and we'll, we'll be able to have a, a better feel for where they're going to end up. And, you know, it's likely that even second reading, we may have some changes between second and third reading until they finalize their budget, and we can really see what revenue we have to work with. But this is a good, good start. We feel like on our budget, we, we have a lot of, obviously, retention recruitment strategies within, built into this budget that are new. Some have been tried and true in other districts, some are new to us, and we're excited about the opportunity that those will have to, for us to retain our staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Dr. Little, you may want to have some wrap-up comments as well.
Yeah, I just want you to, I want you to reiterate that last part about revenues associated with the state funding, and that's still in process. Just kind of reiterate that for just one more time, please.
Sure. You know, as, as we, as we looked at this budget, I mean, there's, there's changes that are happening every day. Our, our state legislature is working hard to, you know, develop a state budget. Obviously, education funding is a huge part of that budget. And, you know, we, we will continue to monitor those changes, you know, as, as they come in. But, but we, you know, as of today even, we, we got that information about the additional thousand dollars. It's very important, and, and I, you know, if you have the opportunity to interact with your legislators, it's very important that they annualized the step that we just gave. And so that's the first priority. Make sure we got that funded again, right? And so it didn't do any good to give that step and then not fund it on an ongoing basis. And so they have done that. The Senate version today annualized that step, and that's very important. And then the next thing was to give, you know, the step for next year, so that we're not in the same boat at the end of next year trying to retroactively give a step or whatever. And so they, they've included that as well, and then they went another step further and included the thousand dollars. So it's just an ongoing conversation, and we'll, you know, we'll be monitoring it closely, and that'll have impacts on, on second reading for sure.
And then the S R funding that we talked about last time is not part of this operating budget because those are earmarked one-time funds, right?
That, that's correct. Those are federal funds.
Right.
Excuse me, those are federal funds. And we anticipate, we, we were hoping that we would get some information today on S R three. And basically, all we got was hurry up and wait. They don't have a distribution yet, they're still working on that distribution number. Hopefully by mid-May, they'll have the distribution number available. But realistically, it's probably going to be later in May. I would anticipate actually after second reading even, before we really know all the ins and outs of how that money can be spent and used. And, and then, you know, we'll certainly evaluate that, but that, you know, it has some implications maybe to some of the staffing that we may do here, or some of the other things that we may be able to use in this budget. But it's likely that it's going to kind of be after the fact. Now, they did extend it to twenty-twenty-four, so it's another year. So, you know, we, we do have the opportunity to make use of those funds over the next, really, three budget years, so.
But, but how it'll play out is essentially the fund balance portion of our expected revenue won't be tapped into as expected, I presume. But if the S R funds depend on what those values are, and so we'll come in under budget on those sources of revenue, the, the fund balance sources, I presume is how that'll play out.
Well, it, it, it could. I mean, you're not going to use S R to offset a step increase, for example.
Right. You have to use it for the-
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, they're going to be defined categories, and actually, in S R three, we, we've heard some different presentations, and some of those presentations say that at least twenty percent of that funding has to be earmarked for learning loss. Ironically, what, what happened apparently is a lot of districts went out there and spent all of S R two on facility upgrades and didn't really focus on learning loss and the, the, the needs of students, you know, in, in the classroom. And so the federal government said, nah, you're, you're going to put money in learning loss, that's what this money's for. And so they, they, you know, kind of grouped that and said, you're going to have to spend this much in that category. So, but we'll have to make, we'll have to see how that plays out. I mean, there, there will be some offsets for some things that are in general fund that we can buy out of that, that will offset, and, and things that will continue to offset. So I anticipate it probably having a bigger impact maybe, you know, next year through, you know, budget offsets that we don't know about yet, or even into the next few years because it goes on out to twenty-twenty-four.
As an element of process, again, I mean, do what you will, but I would suggest we continue to budget based upon none of those funds, and then as those funds are applied, we would reduce the use of fund balance as part of the revenue.
Yes, sir.
I think that keeps us safe.
Well, and, and, and that's, that's a very good point because we, we talked last time about the cliff, the funding cliff that you're going to, you're going to reach. If you have a bunch of things that you've dumped into there, and you remove those from general fund, all of a sudden, you got to put them all back.
Right.
And so-
Which isn't respectful to our community.
That's right.
Well, we are also going to try our best, and I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise and under-deliver, but we are going to try our best to create that plan so that you have it in mind before we finish the third reading. Now, that really is dependent upon other factors. We don't know, for example, if it will be available at that time. We anticipate it will be. Again, Mr. Salters talked about it being mid-May. But what we want to be able to do is, is we would certainly, if we can get that plan in place prior to third reading, then what we could be able to do is go back to that budget and say, these are the things we can take out. Now, either that looks, you, you leave them out, or you add some other priorities that you might have. So for example, if you wanted to do an increase for your custodial staff, you know, for, you know, something along those lines, you would have other options to move forward if you so wish, depending on what the, what it looked like. So for example, if one of the, we believe that a, a strategy for learning loss and catching up from the COVID slide is reduction of class size. So if that could be part of the plan, if the board decides, you know, if we kind of can make that part of the plan, that might change some other factors about where we're leaning. So again, I don't want to overpromise here and, and then have to under-deliver and back that out. But I, I would really like to have that plan in action and presented to the board so that it's a part of the decision-making around the operational budget because those two things might go hand in hand. Or it might not. It might be strings attached to, attached to the federal budget where it doesn't really impact our operational budget all that much. I mean, that is certainly, federal dollars have a history of doing that. You've got to, you can't supplant sometimes, and, and, which we have to follow all those rules and regulations as well. So those, those, those monies and those dollars will have lots of strings attached, I'm sure. But we want to make sure that, that as we're, we're, we're doing that third reading of the budget, we're going to try our best to make sure you have that frame about what that plan looks like before we, before we get to that final piece. Is that a fair way to describe it, Mr. Salters?
It is, and I, I would just try to reduce that expectation as, as low as I really can, only because it's, it's very unlikely that we will get a distribution, develop a plan, and have the state approve the plan before third reading of our budget, or really even before midsummer timeframe because we talked about today in a meeting that the approval of these plans is, is getting more and more complicated. For example, if you included any kind of facilities improvements in the plan, the plan then goes over to the Office of School Facilities for them to review and make sure that it does in fact meet the guidelines of the federal process. You have to have, you, you got to meet Davis Bacon and all these other guidelines for, for federal funding. And so that has, has slowed, slowed the process down. We have some, a, a number of districts today were frustrated because their S R two plans were not approved yet, and they're, you know, they're sitting in various departments within the agency because they're covered up trying to get through all those plans to, to, to review and approve them. So I don't know that we would have a third, S R three plan approved that we could say, hey, look, this is, you know, we got this blessed, we can go this route and do these things by that timeframe. We certainly will work and, and keep you guys updated as, as we, as we make progress. But, you know, I, I think as, as you said, Dr. Powers, really the focus needs to be on moving forward with, with what we have, and, and then supplement that if, if we have the opportunity.
Can you go back a few slides-
Sure.
-to the base student cost? So looking at the, the green bars, obviously, that was the actual funded base student cost. So we are just now getting back to pre-recession two-thousand-and-eight levels, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, and, and this is just more just for, for informational purposes, but on that day, Dow Jones Industrial was roughly trading around thirteen thousand. It closed out today at plus there, at, right at thirty-three thousand. We've seen a twenty percent increase in currency in the market over the past twelve months, and we are just now hitting two-thousand-and-eight numbers. I mean, that, that just, the student cha, the student needs did not change in two-thousand-and-eight to two-thousand-and-nine to two-thousand-and-ten because we decided to give people loans they shouldn't have gotten.
That's right. And, and just for-
I, I find that, I, it, it never really occurred to me until I saw it in that bar graph form, but when you look at it pre-recession, I mean, that's, that's actually just a sad commentary.
And I, I don't want to make your, you know, your, your stomach turn even more, but the gap of that blue to green bar on, on the last year there represents roughly eighteen million dollars for us. So-
And then compound it.
Well, and honestly, if you follow the General Assembly's conversations about the base student cost over the last five, six, seven years, the validity and weight that they give the base student cost continues to decrease. I mean, they don't even use it as a, as a, even though a previous General Assembly bound them to it, they, they don't really even consider it a benchmark to even aspire to. And that's, that, that's extremely frustrating. And it just kind of goes to the whole ball of wax with, with education funding in South Carolina that it just, it, it needs some serious people thinking seriously about the needs of the students in the state. And that, that's just not happening.
And what, what I would say too, just as information, and this is, you know, second-hand, so I, I did not hear these, these comments, but apparently there's a, a good bit of conversation at the state legislature now about not being too worried about school districts and what they're funded, how their funding streams are right now because we have the opportunity to have access to so much federal funding. And, and so while that is, there are truths to that. You know, Ms. Green will talk about, you know, special ed funding for however many years and, and the gaps that we've experienced there. I mean, shortfall is forever, and-
But those numbers only equated to thirty-seven, wasn't it? Total between S R fundings and CARES, and that was thirty-seven million?
Seventeen million for us right now, so-
Projected for the S R two-
Oh, oh, and then, yeah, sorry, and S R three, right.
So that would be two years.
Well, and, and so the, 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 the point is, those funding streams all have specific guidelines.
Right.
You know, it's not like, as I said, it's not like you can just pay salaries for all your teachers with that, you know, as a, you know, pay a bonus or whatever, or a step. So there's a, there's a number of different restrictions on that funding. It is true, there's a lot of funding coming to us, but it's not in the form of unrestricted money that, that you as the board can say, hey, we want to do this to meet our mission. It has to fit their, you know, their model. And then we also have to just continue to operate our, you know, our schools as, as we have. So the, the notion that we're, we're getting all this money and we don't need baseline funding is, is, is not, I, I, I don't think it's a very, a good strategy for the, for the federal, I mean, the state to look at. And, and it creates the idea of this huge cliff in one, two, three, or four years, however long you want to look at it, that, that's going to happen if you put all your eggs in those baskets. And then, you know, at, at the end of twenty-twenty-four, you're looking around and you're, you got a big hole to fill.
Because that, that, that funding that's coming right now is not intended, it's intended to make up deficiencies created by the pandemic, not deficiencies, longstanding deficiencies created by poor funding at the state level. And, but they're, you know, they're just kind of put it behind the curtain and just are kind of trying to pretend that it's not there. And, and the risk is that they'll, what they've historically done is they do that and then they never come back to it.
Right.
And so that, that's terrifying.
All right.
And could you go back to maybe, I think it's maybe slide three? Keep going forward one. Yep, there we go.
Sorry.
Yep, perfect, thank you. So last meeting, I, I had asked a question about what did we learn from COVID? And, you know, as we look at this, you know, looking at it through the lens of the strategic plan, and SLT was, was really kind enough to, to really hit on some topics, digital divide, hit on social emotional needs. Now that we're, we're post-first reading, I would be interested to hear from, from the SLT, where, looking at our priorities, looking where things are stacking up, where do, where do you fit these? And it may not be just one, it may be multiple, but I, I would like to hear, where do you, what type of picture is this budget painting for us?
So I'll start. An observation I've made the last two board meetings as Mr. Stacy has brought, brought forth recommendations for hires. One is, I don't know if you've noticed, but many of our people we are hiring have zero experience. Next year will be their first year. So I hate to put the burden on HR and, and instruction, but that means that HR has a heavy lift because that's a teacher's induction year. And it also means that instruction has a heavy lift because we need to provide professional learning for these beginning teachers who are venturing into a world like we've never seen before. And so that's one thing. And the second thing is, I, I so appreciate what Mr. Salters said and his warning about the cliff. We are blessed to get federal funding, but there are two areas that from an instructional standpoint you have to focus on. One is literacy, and the other one is math. And, and the other piece we talked about last time is the social emotional needs of our students. I, I wish the General Assembly would talk about this past year, the additional money we need because of the experiences that our children have been through have been just catastrophic, and we're going to be hit with that next year. So from where I sit, there are two things we have to focus on next year. We have to focus on time, and the department's already told us, they're not giving us more money for time, they're saying they're not going to have a leap week next year. They've given us money to pay for time, so we have to think about that. How are we going to give more time to instruction and student engagement? And the second thing is, we have to ensure that there's a quality teacher in every classroom. And if we can get that right, I think we're going to be fine with this budget.
I would say from a student services perspective, and Dr. Tally has, has mentioned this already, the, the social and emotional needs of our students have never been more magnified than they are now. And we've been able to acquire a screener to help with, with students' needs that we'll be implementing this summer, actually with a, as a pilot program of one of our camps in this, this coming school year. I won't show my hand, but in looking towards the S R three funds, I already have an idea in my mind, a perfect expenditure for that related to social and emotional learning. You know, we, we talk about competing priorities, I think we have the same priority, we just have competing ways to get there. And so I think we're all pulling the wagon the, the same way, but we just, we kind of go, approach it from a different perspective. Another thing that we're- Another thing that we're doing that's exciting to me is, I don't know if we'd call it a repurposing because we've used that word a lot, but the way we do our alternative educational services now that Lula is being looped into and, and, and put under that umbrella, it gives us an opportunity to once again, look at how we are working with our, our students who are most vulnerable and in most need and how we can better support that academically with the learning loss and also with, you know, behavior modifications and with the social and emotional. So I'm, I'm very excited in the, in the direction we're going. And, and I think these funds are going to, you know, hit a lot of those commitments. You can kind of just about lump them into every one of them if, if need be, so.
Now, you know, I can't go unspoken. So I think there's one slide up there that really hits to that whole system commitment about all students, and it's class size reduction. I mean, if we don't do anything more than just do class size reduction, in my mind, I mean, that's, it's crazy to think that we've gone from 23 to one to 21 to one in elementary, lower elementary, 23 to one from 26 to one in fourth and fifth grade. I don't, when you talk about time, Dr. Tally, the time to get from one individual kid to the next, and you got 27, 28 kids in a classroom versus 23, that's big. And honestly, if we could even make it less and then get the ratios down even further, that would be awesome. And, and maybe the S R funds could help us get that started. But then the other side of it is, I told you earlier, we have 108 certified vacancies. The question is, can we find the people to, to fill those vacancies? Now, we've had some limited, well, some, some success, it's not limited success. We've had some success with a program called K-12 Elevate. I read a report where they just met with Jessica Kiesler and Leah Sarantopoulos and talked to them about how it was working for those students over there. And it was very promising what's happening for them. They're helping provide certified teachers in a classroom via an online setting. But we have, you know, classroom coats that works with them. So it may be that we have to reach out to them more to help us find the people to go in the classroom. But I think reduced class sizes is probably the best thing that's happened here in a long, long time. I think morale for our staff, when you can, I mean, I've said this to SLT over and over again, when you can tell teachers, we're reducing your class size, they jump up and down. And one may not seem like a lot, but to them, it is a lot. We can get them down to, that's even better. And when you go 26 to 23, that's pretty significant. So, and then maybe if we could get those people, then we'd have more money. We could build more buildings and more classrooms and have places to put them. But that, that would be my answer to the biggest system commitment, number one, about all students and just reducing the numbers of, I mean, the number of the kids that teachers have to respond to every day helps tremendously.
And I think, you know, just, just to echo that a little bit, if you look at those commitments, they, they all involve, as I mentioned earlier, our, our most important resource, and that's our people. You can't do any one of those things without quality people. And this budget really focuses on a number of different individuals and groups of people and, and really makes a commitment to try to focus on keeping those people, doing some different things that we've never done with retention strategies and recruitment strategies. So that's, that's an exciting thing to, to highlight those things. Are there other areas we can look at? Absolutely. And, and hopefully, we can have the opportunity to do that with some more revenue as it comes in or if it comes in. But that, that's the, that's the key thing is, is I think this budget really focuses on supporting our, our most important resources, and that's our people.
Yeah, that, that's very helpful. And, you know, I, I think you can take, you can take any, any rough plan and, and make it fit within a box. I mean, that can happen. But then you can also tell when it's genuinely been thought about of trying to run it through the lens. And, and so I would agree. I, I think, you know, y'all have really done an exceptional job of really trying to address what we are truly committed to. My, my only one piece of feedback I, I would have is, and, and I may be mistaken about this, specific to Lula, was there a, a, was there an account for a school counselor dedicated to Lula? Two, okay.
Well, now, two in, at AES, and that would include the Lula students and students who are assigned to AES for other reasons.
Okay, okay, got you. My only concern there being, I, I think if we've learned anything through COVID is the significant impact that an online learning envol- environment can have on soft skill development. And having sat through some of my own kids' I G Ps and those kind of things, you know, counselors do such a wonderful job at, at really trying to develop those soft skills with the kids. And, and I would hate for, for those Lula kids to miss out on some of that soft skill development that could happen. So that, that would be my only feedback. Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments and questions. Mr. Stacy, when you said, when you can tell teachers, we are reducing your class size, they jump up and down. And that's so true. I just want to add on, when you can actually show that to them is when there's a big difference. I know we had some reports earlier this year about student teacher ratio, and then I did some of my own. And when I actually use the reports that I pulled from each individual class, we show at White Nile Middle School in 38 core classes, we have 29 to 33 students. At Pleasant Hill Middle in 10 core classes, we have 30 to 36 students. And at Gilbert Middle, in some of the core classes, there are 29 to 33 students. So I think somewhere along the way, we need to have a report to the board that shows not only did we say that we're going to have, you know, this many students in each class, this is actually how many students we have in each class so that we have a way to hold the district accountable with what we've done with the budget. And a question for you, Mr. Caldwell. Ms. Henson had mentioned bus driver pay. I believe we're starting all bus drivers out at six hours. Do you know for sure?
That's right, all the new hires, that's right.
Okay, so all the new hires are six hours. Okay. Also, this may be a question for Mr. Salters. So we've increased bus driver pay, subpay. What about the instructional assistants, food service, custodians? Did we increase their pay at all?
Not individually in the budget as it's presented tonight. They would all get a step increase as, as the other employees. But there's not a specific percentage increase above and beyond, or dollar increase above and beyond for those folks at this point.
Okay. Could we get a cost if we did a dollar an hour for those employees?
Yeah, we'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay. Because as it stands now, with the increase to the subpay, if they work eight hours a day and they get the proposed $75 a day, they would bring, the sub would bring home $83.92, which is a little less than $9 a day as to what the grade five starting position of that starting person would be. If they started out at the bottom of the salary scale, they would only be bringing home a little less than $9 a day than a sub would, $9 more a day than a sub would. Okay, slide seven. Man, I picked that up already. What is the pay increase for the nurses, social workers, OTPT that you have mentioned on there?
So it would, it would vary by individual. So that, what, what they're doing is basically aligning them to the, the schedule that you've been provided so that if, for example, if a nurse has a bachelor's degree, they would get placed on the schedule at that level and it, at their, at their existing years of experience. So they would get recognized for having a bachelor's degree. Or if they had a master's degree, a- as an example, they, they would get recognized. So it, it varies individually based on their degree.
Okay. Thank you. And last year, we were given approved, adjusted, actual to date, actual adjusted and proposed budget. Can we get those for this year? Because this year, we just have the, we'll see.
Are you talking about on one of the, the slides?
Actually, in the.
Or in, in the, in the budget book?
Yeah, in the budget book last year. You gave us everything it was.
Like a, a year to date?
Right, it's an approved budget, adjusted budget, actual expenditures as of.
Oh, a- as of whatever.
May 31st, right. And then actual over, under adjusted budget. And then it was the third reading proposed budget. So we must have gotten that on during the third reading. But if we could get something like that, it helps.
It was probably a budget, the actual report that we provided for you. We'll go back and look at that and get you that information, absolutely.
Okay. Let's see here. The grounds maintenance contract, that was in slide 15. So I'm assuming that has been, that was signed for a year. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So what happened, I mean, just by chance, if the board said, we don't, we don't want to pay $722,000 a year for grounds maintenance? Well, what happened then?
The, the fund, it's, we have a non-appropriations clause in all of our contracts, so we would end up canceling the contract.
Okay. I'm just, I know in some districts, things like that come before the board before they actually enter into the contract. So why don't we do that here?
Our procurement guidelines and policy sets up how we do that. I mean, it depends on the district and what their procurement code says to do.
Okay. And on those slides, 13, 15, 16, I think, yeah, 13, 15, 16. Y'all were going over that and giving us the details on each, such as the drug testing kits, the repairs and supplies requirement. Is that somewhere that we could get a printout of everything that y'all went over? We went into details of each thing.
You want, so you want a, a summary of each of those? I mean, I can give you the, I'll provide you the notes that I have for a descri- brief description that I used. Yeah, we can provide that for you, absolutely.
Okay. And.
What, what ends up happening is, is all of those amounts end up being budgeted in a number of different accounts, which you have in your detailed budget book there. But you wouldn't necessarily see, they'll, it'll show up in a supply account, for example. So you wouldn't know that it's necessarily for drug testing kits a- as an example.
Okay.
But we can provide that for you.
And the Chief Technology Innovation Officer, which was slide 13. When this was brought up in executive session, the board was told that this was something we would discuss at a later time. And I do believe this is a conversation we need to have at, at some point in time because we've had a lot of restructuring and positions that have been combined. And now we're taking a position from 2010 or 11 and bringing it back. So I, at some point in time, I think this just needs to be put on the agenda that we need to discuss the restructuring that has taken place in the district. And if that doesn't lend itself to some other type of position. And I think that's all I have for now. Thank y'all. Great job.
Thank you.
Board, does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Salters or anyone on SLT about the first reading? Thank you, Mr. Salters and your team. Excellent. I'm very excited about all the teacher retention options that are in the bu- the proposed budget. I think that that is very good news.